Hour 7:30, start this meeting.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with a letter of condolence and extend our condolences to the family of Robert R. Santos upon his passing on the 31st of August 2018. Mr. Santos served the United States Air Force during the Korean War. I'd also like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Santos and many of the rest of us who have passed. Thank you. Okay, so for approval of last meeting's minutes.
Motion to approve.
So moved, seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? Announcements from the President. So first, the Old Colony Elder Services Family Caregiver Support Program. Are you caring for an adult, spouse, parent, grandchild, father, relative, or friend? They can help. Park caregivers, specialists, identify your caregiver needs, get information about local... Find out about support programs, music and memory programs to help loved ones who may have Alzheimer's or dementia find renewed meaning and connection with their lives in music. Animatronic pets. And all the love in the world to give, so that's a great thing for them. Lunch at noon time, call Bridgewater COA to RSVP for lunch. October 2nd, 2018, from 12:00 PM for the presentation at 12:30, the Bridgewater Council on Aging. Also, the 30th Annual Autumn Fest, September 29th, 2018. This year's event will be held on Saturday, September 29th, 2018, from 10:00 to 4:00 PM on the campus of Bridgewater State University in front of Boyd and Hall on the Quad. That's always fun, looking forward to going to that. None? Like to speak? Come on up, say your piece. Also, for the record, this is being recorded. And, uh... Anybody? Okay. Moving on to appointments, no appointment. And we're just about coming up to 7:33, so we've got a couple of minutes to hit 7:35 for our hearing. I don't think we quite have enough time to take anything out of order. So in one minute, we will start our hearing. Now at 7:35. I'd like to start with the, uh... The hearing. Order OFF, FY19-015 Transfer Order, Capital Transfer LED Light Conversion Project. So. Pardon me as I shuffle through my papers. Now, the hearing's officially open. Would the petitioner please come forward? No. Don't come forward, petitioner. Reel me in, town manager's not here. So, Mr. Counsel?
I don't bring forward legislation. That would be beyond my purview, but I believe the financial...
Tony's sitting in for that position, that...
Correct.
For the town manager. Thank you, Ms. Loesch.
So, I will bring forward and give you a brief summary of this particular order, if that's in order. Okay. The money's here at a fund, the assessment and design of a townwide LED streets system. So it's an assessment process. When the assessment's complete, the conversion could save the town significant amount. And there are electrical expense, it will reduce the electrical usage as well. This appropriation will establish how much the town will need to expend to purchase the streetlights, pay for the actual conversion, and the cost of ongoing maintenance.
Okay, thank you. We're going to postpone, postpone this, uh... We need to... Motion to close the hearing? Is that what I'm hearing?
Close the hearing?
So is the intent to take no action tonight on this?
I would like to have this postponed pending FinCom disposition.
Okay. Then why don't we make a motion to continue the hearing until our next meeting?
That sounds good. Motion made and continued any discussion? No. Hearing is continued.
Can we vote?
Yes, we should. Always jumping the gun. Okay, those in favor of moving the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against? Okay. Moving along. Next. 7:38, perfect. FY19-018 Transfer Order Appropriation for Street Assessment. Mr. Sumonti?
Uh, yes, this order's being put forth to you. It's part of a parcel to what's been requested by the town manager for a roads and sidewalk program. So this appropriation funds the townwide street sidewalk assessments, which will be the starting point for the street and sidewalk plan requested by councils, as I previously stated. After the assessment phase, the town may choose to retain the software to update and track the infrastructure improvements, track complaints, and subsequent repairs, as well as inventory the utility repairs and installations. Uh, this will provide a comprehensive video and digitizing of the town's streets and sidewalks.
And make a motion to continue this hearing until our next meeting?
I'll second it.
Made and seconded.
I'd like to have a little bit of discussion on that. The reason why we're doing this is because the Finance Committee hasn't been able to meet on these. Not because we want to continue these things and we want to push them down the road. And, um, anybody who's watching tonight, please consider volunteering to join the Finance Committee. It's not a really heavy lift. But it is vital by our charter, the way it's written, everything has to go through the Finance Committee that is of a financial nature, otherwise we can't act on it. And so, uh, right now, our lack of, um, people on the Finance Committee and their inability to get a quorum are hamstringing us as a town in moving forward with doing the things we want to do. So I make an urgent appeal to everybody who's watching and is interested, everyone in the audience. Please consider getting involved on the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the matter? So a motion was made to move, postpone this to, uh, 10:09 pending FinCom disposition. Those in favor of the move? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against? Now, at the time of 7:40, we will begin the hearing for... Which has been continued from 9/11/18, for the license revocation hearing for Skip's Liquors.
Good evening.
So, one moment, sir. Town Council is opening the continuation of the public hearing on whether to revoke the liquor license issued to Patel Sons Incorporated, doing business as Skip's Liquors, for the premises located on 98 to 100 Plymouth Street, Bridgewater, Mass. The reason for revocation of such licenses is the non-use of the license. So, we now open, and Mr. Patel, you may now speak.
Good evening, Counselor. As we speak, the store has been open since last Saturday, and every day we are in business. And it's progressing every day, filling the inventories. And probably in the next week or so, it will be at 100% potential. So, we have started doing business.
Counselors? Mr. Wood?
Um, I think Mr. George had requested, unfortunately he's not here, that the building inspector come and speak about the project as well. I don't have any questions for him, I didn't know if others did. I know the building inspector's in the audience here.
Something about a temporary approval from the building official? An explanation on that?
Yes.
We could have the building inspector up.
And I think that it should just be questions directed to the building inspector instead of maybe just...
Mr. Patel, you may take a seat and we'll have the building inspector come up. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So I think, uh... Mr. Souza, did you have a question?
Yes, I read something, it was a temporary approval?
Yes, uh, Mr. Patel has a temporary occupancy permit, and it's for the liquor store, retail store only. The reason is, in the town of Bridgewater, to get a final occupancy, there has to be a final approval of the site plan review from the planning board. And that has not yet been completed. Mr. Patel also has to file for a modification because he's done some more, he's done extra tiring of the lot than was approved by the planning board. So, not to hold up the business and the license because they're pretty much site plan items. We gave a temporary occupancy permit because the store itself, it's all CMR 780 for the building code. The fire department signed off, electrical signed off, plumbing signed off. All the smoke detectors, the sprinkler system is all up. But at this point, I've given a 90, uh, either... I gave a 60-day temporary occupancy permit for Mr. Patel to have his engineer do a final as-built on the property and file for the modification with the site plan review for them to approve it. He's also on the temporary occupancy permit, the residential use upstairs isn't to be used until there's a small few items as far as the kitchen cabinets weren't in. But that doesn't affect the business on the first floor, it's just like on a tenant fit-out where you have multiple businesses. This business is all set for temporary occupancy. He only does have 60 days to complete this, where I will have to, at 60 days, review the process and either give another temporary occupancy permit, or meet with the town manager to discuss, uh, you know, any complications from this.
780, CMR 780?
That's the mass building code.
And upstairs is out of the picture for the 60 days?
Right now, yeah. Upstairs, at the moment, Mr. Patel has an office on the second floor, and he has a one, uh, one unit apartment upstairs. So right now, on the temporary occupancy permit, it does state the upstairs is not to be used until a final occupancy permit has been given by the planning board.
And you mentioned kitchen cabinets, so there's some build-outs still left.
There's some cabinets missing.
Must be done?
Yeah. Um, I, Mr. Patel told me there's a financial reason why he couldn't get the upstairs apartment done. So dealing with the license and dealing with the businesses on the first floor, and meeting all the qualifications and all the safety issues and ADA issues that were requested, we, I felt it not a problem to issue a temporary on the retail liquor store space.
Mr. Wood?
Uh, just a question about the handicap space?
Yeah.
So the handicap space is behind the building?
Right.
And in order for someone in a wheelchair or others, they would have to walk down the driveway, which is a two-way driveway?
Right.
That's not part of, that's not an issue?
Because that is the closest spot to the handicap ramp. Because the main entrance is on the front, and you always have to with handicap, the main entrance is where the handicap person has to be able to use, so it's, you don't want to give them a back entrance because it makes it, it's a little demeaning to have somebody use a back entrance. So that is the location in the front, and that's where we had some holdup on some of this building because there was a grade change on the height of the building. Mr. Patel wanted to raise the building up to make the basement so taller. So we had about a good month and a half of waiting for the engineer to come back with plans because when you raise the building, you also affect the length of your handicap ramp. So, you know, there's been a lot of issues as far as changes on this plan. But I, it's understandable because you're exactly right. It is on the back of the building, it's the closest spot to the driveway, but there was really no other location. Because I know in the original plan that was, it wasn't approved, but the original plan that was turned in showed three spots on the street, but three spots aren't allowed on the street. It's just not allowed. I know it was used that way before, but it's not allowable use. So all the spots had to go in the back, and there's eight spots in the back that did get a variance from the zoning board of appeals. This, this plan was approved back in 2000, I think 2016, by the previous inspector. So there's a lot of, you know, different issues as far as, from them to now.
You mentioned, um, the pavement on the, uh... I'm assuming it's from the right side of the building from where you stand at the street. Now, that's not supposed to be there.
No, in the original plan, if you look at the original plan that's approved by the planning board, there was no payment on, looking at the building on the right-hand side, and they've paved it all the way down. That becomes an issue with the planning board because when you come in and you get a plan approved by the planning board, what you put in, elevations, drainage, you know, impervious surfaces, that's what gets approved. And this, um, you know, this wasn't approved. And I know Mr. Patel did talk to the town engineer, the town engineer, and, excuse me, town engineer did recommend going for modification to find out if it was that much of an issue, so...
Do you happen to know where that stands?
I do not know if Mr. Patel has gone in front of the planning board for a modification.
We are submitting that...
Do you have, not yet?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for the inspector? So, end of the 60 days is coming up, obviously in less than 60 days. Shortlist, insurmountable list, long list, typical list that you've gone through several times?
Planning board items right now are what we're looking at. Building-wise, besides the kitchen of stairs, all done, all completed, all requirements met by ADA, fire, building, everything's been met. A lot of times we, just to give you an idea of what happens sometimes with temporary occupancy permits is, a lot of times we give them because during the season, someone might not be able to get their landscaping finished, their paving in, and to hold up a business until that can be done or until the next planning board meeting is really not pro-business. So you, as long as you meet the safety of the building and the requirements, if it's pretty much just the meeting of the planning board, we will give in a temporary occupancy permit. And that's, in the building code, it's common, and it's even part of the building code, temporary occupancy permits.
Speaking of process and status and season changes, we've had eight or 10 season changes since this whole ordeal started. We've had in addition to you, to the team here in Bridgewater. In your experience with respect to this, uh, store and all the planning involved, where would you feel, if I can ask this, what the holdup was? Was it, where was the longest lead items that we had contributed to what?
Well, the first thing, when I became the building inspector, because the permit was already issued. So when I came on at that point, the foundation of the footings were being put in. And the previous contractor that was working for Mr. Patel put the footings in wrong. So we had to have him remove it, and they had to dig it down deeper. But to dig it down deeper, they had to get a permit from me to put up a, basically, a retaining wall along the driveway so they could dig it deeper. So that had to be engineered before, so we lost a lot of time on that. So then the foundation goes in, and then the contractor comes and they decided to raise it. Well then now we have to get another plan because you're raising it and you're changing all the elevation on entranceway, rear entrance, front entrance. So that took, uh, some more time. Besides that, the building of the, the structure, as a builder, it's the speed that you move at or the amount of subs, I can't tell somebody to go any faster or any slower. But, I mean, I, again, yeah, it was a building that, you know, from a professional point of view, should have been a lot quicker. Uh, but I, as the building inspector, I have no, I can't, you know, penalize anybody for the speed or the time that a building gets built.
Understood.
Yeah.
You had said now twice, or maybe more, decided to raise the foundation?
Yeah.
Is this something that they decided and submitted a refresh, refreshed plan to you? Or something you happened upon?
Yeah, we haven't, no, it was, it was, they asked, what they asked to do was raise, they asked to reframe it a different way. And when it was brought to me and myself looking at the grades and knowing the grades on the handicap ramp, I told him that if you're going to raise this building up, I think it was about a foot and a half or a foot, you would have to have it re-engineered because the front doorway would have to change because now the ramp, because ramps are one and 12 inches, would have to be extended. So until we got back the, the plan from the engineer explaining this, there was a little bit of a holdup on, on, you know, how fast that they could go because they had to really wait to find out what the engineer had put in place. And I can't let anything keep going until I have an engineer's stamp saying that it's going to work.
And last thing here, question for, for me. The better the condition and information is that you get with those plans from, you know, the customer side of it or the requester's side of it, the more efficient you can make your decisions.
Right, and I have a, and I should have brought it, I have a file about this fat with about all the plans, all the changes, all the change orders, what was built. I know there were some issues, because I did watch the last meeting, on items that were supposedly not on the plan. But, um, the building code's law, and you know, law says you have to have a handicap spot. I know it wasn't drawn on there, but it has to go on there. It didn't show a bathroom on the first floor, you have to have a handicap bathroom on the first floor. It didn't show a sprinkler system, and I, Mr. Patel did come in with his architect, and I gave the architect and Mr. Patel all the information from all Mass amendments showing that a mixed use required a sprinkler system. I know that it was saying that it wasn't on the plan, it wasn't on the plan, it doesn't matter. It's required by Mass law to have these items. If somebody missed it or missed looking at it, it doesn't matter. If you have an architect, and the biggest thing that I told Mr. Patel is, you have a licensed contractor pulling this permit. Licensed in Massachusetts needs to know the building code. I don't need to keep coming over and explaining every single moment on every change that I look at and telling you why, and then coming back and being told that I keep changing it. It's, every time I saw something, I saw something new. And a lot of times when we went out there to do inspections, say for, when we did the sprinkler system and it failed while I was there, you know, I'm standing there waiting for the sprinkler, you notice that the bathroom was wrong, you notice that the handicap railing's wrong, you know, I'm not going there and adding. I basically, you know, out of the goodness of my, basically trying to tell somebody, hey, while I'm here, this is wrong, this is wrong, I'm not adding up. We really only did one final inspection, which was failed, and then the last final inspection. That was it. The other inspections were more or less going there to look at something or questions about something and saying, these two things are wrong. I mean, I could have waited to the end, right to the end, and then said, here's a list of 40 things that you have wrong. But, you know, we want to work with people, we want businesses to go on. And at the end, I had to tell Mr. Patel that I will not deal with Mr. Patel anymore. I will only deal with your contractor that pulled the permit. And that's, at the end, that's how we got with that. Even with the handicap ramp, I gave Mr. Patel and his contractor, right out of the building code, what was required for a handicap ramp. If it isn't done correctly, and I come back, it's incorrect, it's incorrect. And if I come back again, it's incorrect, it's incorrect. I'm not changing it. I gave you the paperwork, Mass law, on what's required, so that's as much as I can do.
Thank you. Any other question? Mr. Wood?
Sorry, a follow-up on the earlier question, so there are no parking spaces in front of the store?
There's only eight in the back. He got a, there was a variance that was given to Mr. Patel by the zoning board of appeals, the eight spots. The building really should have had 15 between the, um, the store and the two apartments for, excuse me, the two spaces for the apartment above. But he did get a variance because of the conditions and it being there, they did give him a variance for eight spots.
Yeah, I remember parking in front of Skip's.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's funny that you mention that because when I did go there, the first thing as the building inspector, I said, aren't there three spots in the front? And if there are three spots in the front, they have to be lined. You can't just have imaginary spots, they either have to be lined or they're not there. So going back, looking through all the file, um, as, as the plans went on, the three spots disappeared. So the first plan that was turned in did show the three spots, but as plans went on, I think it's like seven renovations, or seven, six changes that the final plan did not show the three spots in the front.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Gallagher?
Regarding the spots out front, well, the non-spots out front, are there no parking, is there a no parking sign?
No, there's not.
So there, there is nothing to stop someone from doing that?
No, there isn't, there isn't. But I, you know, when, as the building inspector, I have to represent whatever the planning board has approved.
Sure.
Because I have to enforce all the conservation, planning board zoning. So that's, you know, it was a question near the end.
Could the owners put in for another request to add three spots?
I think he would have to probably go through Tomate and probably through the highway department because the road is not, I mean, as you know that road, it's, I know, I'm not from Bridgewater, but I remember the liquor store that used to be there, and, you know, I get all the feedback from everybody, oh, we used to park out front, we used to park across the street, you know, but, um, I guess he could, if he wanted to, try to, you know, ask for something. That would be up to the town.
It's a different street than it was back then. Other questions for you? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Patel.
Mr. Patel?
Uh, congratulations.
Thank you.
It was at your store on Sunday. You know, slow start, I guess, but, so I'm, I'm asking first about the name of the store. So we've been talking for five years about Skip's, but the receipt said Seaside Liquors.
Correct. That's what it's going to be as a seaside wine inspector. We're not going to carry forward as a Skip's Liquors.
Have you notified the licensing board of a change in doing businesses?
Uh, not yet. I will be.
Okay, so you're doing business right now as Seaside Liquors, not as Skip's?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, did you notice, so, uh, you were open early on Sunday. Did you notify the licensing board of your intention to open before your license?
So Sunday, I, um, I wasn't here, I wasn't at the store, my employee was, and my manager was. He wasn't aware of it, and as, when he called me, I said, no, you should have not opened it. 12 o'clock is on the license, and going forward, I also received from the manager's office call today to change, uh, change of vote and then submit that paper to the office, and then I will be able to open 10 o'clock. So we have no intention to open 10 o'clock until then.
And you mentioned manager, so on the, on the paperwork that you submitted for the renewal, I think you signed off as a manager. Are you going to have a change of manager as well?
Uh, no, I will be the manager, but it will be another person who will be also in charge.
So your operations guy?
Correct. I will be there, but there will be another person that will be operating day-to-day basis business.
All right. Congratulations for opening, good luck.
Thank you.
I make a motion to, um, continue this hearing until December 4th.
Second.
Okay, a motion to continue to September 4th's been made and seconded.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Wood, why?
There's a temporary occupancy on the building that expires in 60 days. Want to make sure that that's concluded to a full occupancy, or the temporary is extended, and that there's, that the business is actually finished.
I just, I seconded it for discussion, so I learned from you, thank you.
No more discussion, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
No, none, thank you.
Anyone else? Hey, those in favor of moving the, continuing the hearing to December 4th at 7:45 PM? Uh, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we're moving it to December 4th, 7:45. Thank you, Mr. Patel. If we're continuing, do we close it? I don't close this if I'm continuing, correct?
No.
Correct. I knew something Dennis didn't, just for the record. The only one. Okay, hearings are done. License transaction... License transactions, no transactions, presentations. Mr. David Moore is here for Hometown Heroes Banner Project Update.
President Haley, thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight, through you to the, uh, councilors and to the people present, the people out there. Program's doing great. Uh, as you remember, this is a program to, uh, display banners of veterans around town, starting on Bedford Street this year and coming up, hopefully to be displayed in other areas. Uh, we've worked with the, uh, superintendent of Bridgewater-Rainham. There will be some, uh, banners of Bridgewater-Rainham vets displayed on their roadway going in. Uh, this will also include some, uh, uh, young men from, uh, Rainham, and the Rainham Veterans Agent is working with us on that also. I'd like to say that the businessmen in Bridgewater have been, businessmen and women have done a tremendous job, uh, in supporting the program. Uh, citizens have stepped forward to help us out. Uh, I've got a great committee working with me. Uh, it's, I, I've worked on a lot of projects in town, uh, over my, my years dealing with municipal government, and this project, what a wonder to go out on. This has been awesome. Just the support, just the, the great feeling about the whole thing. Uh, it's been a great program. And, uh, not to keep you too long, I brought some of the vets here tonight. Uh, in one case, uh, well, in two cases, we have the vets, uh, with their banners. Uh, we have a World War II vet, he's here tonight. And, uh, at this point, I'd, I'd like to bring him in and have him just say a few words. We hope to start hanging banners on October 8th. They'll be up through Veterans Day and coming down about Thanksgiving. They'll be displayed at Santa Ana Common, they'll be displayed at Autumn Fest, and they'll come down until Memorial Day of next year. And then they'll stay up till the Fourth of July Parade, and then they come down until the following Veterans Day. We expect this to be an ongoing program, um, two, three years, four years. Uh, the banners, I've seen them last two or three years, hanging up all year round, so I think we'll get a pretty durable product. Uh, so we're looking forward to it. And now I would like to bring some of the vets in, so you can meet them.
One right behind you, Dave.
Yes, everyone. Come on. When we're all in formation, I'd like to add and just say a few words about the, uh, vet that they're holding up. Out over there with Lieutenant Hennessy.
Really don't know.
Okay. Uh, Lieutenant Hennessy, uh, served in the Korean War, and he was a medical supply officer. He set up MASH units throughout the country, and, uh, somebody let him borrow a tank to sit on. PFC Praddy.
Hello, my name is Thomas Praddy. I'm the proud nephew of PFC Robert E. Praddy, who was killed in action, June 7th, 1944, during the D-Day invasion at Normandy. He was 30 years old.
My daughter. Do not know such deals, but I do know that he served.
My name's Paul Port, grandson of Paul. Last, served in World War, in the age.
Uh, my name's Alex Frisco, I'm the proud grandson of Michael Frisco. Um, he served World War II, he stormed the beach of the Normandy, uh, he enlisted a day after Pearl Harbor.
What do you want me to say?
Bob, you look as good as you're pictured.
I am Fred Mason. Uh, my uncle, brother, he was killed. That would involve defending a bridge in nineteen.
There's a picture of, uh, self, brother, side, both staffs, side. Picture, probably would never happen again in a million years. Brother and I both came back overseas, met at my mother's house. That would never happen. He came back overseas, went to my mother's house, I came back to my mother's house, met there.
Uh, way around the last year, Bridgewater, was in the US Army, 21 and a half years. I did a tour in Vietnam, and a tour in Desert Storm. That's my basic name.
Hey, folks, this is the whole project. We wanted to put faces and real people on the names around town. Met them, you're going to see them hanging up, and hopefully, uh, we've got either orders or in possession of about 25 banners right now. So we'll, we're looking to fill every pole in town that Verizon will let us fill.
I have to tell everybody the quality, the quality of reasons.
It looked like they'll stand up, yeah.
Can deal with rain and, yeah.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Thanks a lot.
It actually seems timely for, for a, a brief recess before we go on to the financial update, so we'll take a, a brief recess and, uh, reconvene here in a few minutes and await Tony's, uh, exciting financial report. Okay, and we're back. Sorry, I had to go outside and thank everybody for that, that was really awesome, I can't wait to see those banners up. Okay, next we have for presentations, a financial update from Mr. Solomonti.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. Um, I will try to keep it brief, um, and, uh, let, uh, questions at the end, uh, fill in the blanks, um, and just, uh, try to take you through, um, all of you, uh, I believe are in possession of the DOR's certification of, of the town's free cash. And, uh, at the end of this presentation, I hope you have an understanding of how we, uh, got here from there. So I'll, without further ado. So tonight's topic we will cover, just the revenue and expenses for '18. We'll take a, a historical look at the undesignated fund balance is what derives our free cash, and also look at our historical free cash from '14 to present. And, uh, we will, uh, take a peek at the free cash analysis and, uh, uh, the recommended allocation, and the thought behind the, uh, allocation of the certified free cash. So we'll start off first by an overview of, uh, the revenue surplus as it pertains to budget. The three major categories, uh, are property tax, cherry sheet, which is your state aid, uh, and local receipts. As you can see by the, uh, the graphic here, there was a surplus in property tax of 771,000. Uh, that's very unusual, and that's driven mostly by tax title. Surplus in state, minor, uh, some, uh, revenue came in that was, uh, a little unexpected. And local receipts, which was, uh, really achieved historical levels for the town of Bridgewater this fiscal year of a million 930, bringing the total, uh, surplus of revenue over, uh, budget of 2,717,658. As you can see, as I break this down a little bit more detail, what you'll see is the different, uh, components of your property tax revenue. The property tax itself just, uh, slightly exceeded, uh, budget, uh, and that's the personal property tax. The real estate tax, again, slightly exceeded budget. The tax liens is where, um, the Treasury Collector's Office, in conjunction with the, uh, Assessors Office, uh, working with, um, the other members of the finance team, have really made strides in, uh, collecting basked back taxes. Um, and that's, uh, shown here in this graphic. And, uh, therefore, the tax liens of 739,938 surplus is what drove our property tax, uh, surplus in FY '18. A little bit from a graphic standpoint, you can see where the, uh, the town's tax title balance was in 2014. Uh, it spiked in 2015, and then the work that's been done over the last three and a half years, well, three years or so, uh, has brought in our tax title balance down to 1,204 as of 630. Everyone see that? Okay, please, yeah, if somehow I'm moving a little too fast. What I also wanted to show you down below here, um, is the disposition of this 1,204 tax title balance, and how we're looking to, uh, resolve this outstanding balance. Uh, the first bucket you're going to see is with our, um, tax title attorney, that's 275,000. 123 roughly, 123,000 is also with our tax title attorney, but we made arrangements with the resident or the taxpayer, uh, to engage with us in a, uh, payment plan. Um, and so that's also driving our balance down. We continue to move in, uh, in, in the court, so that we're, um, being diligent with our responsibilities to protect the town's interests. However, we're working diligently with the, uh, taxpayers in this situation to get those balances resolved. Um, because these tax title balances go back, uh, so far, 1983, um, and a large portion of our tax title balance in this 1,204 is 2010, 2011, and prior. Um, what you're going to see is a large bucket, such as 366,000 dollars, that's really land of low value. Now, if the process was followed appropriately along the, a point of time, it would have been then classified with the Department of Value, uh, Revenue as land of low value, and no further taxing would have been made on those properties. So there's many, many parcels of small, uh, real estate value that comprise 366,000. What does that mean? We, we won't collect that. We will go through the process of writing that off legally with the Department of Revenue. Um, that's why we have, uh, such a large balance in our allowance for abatements and exemptions at this time. It will take care of that, uh, obligation when we're required to do so. 16,000 of our remaining balance has already been approved by the DOR, and we're going to go through the process of taking care of that. 342,000, we're actively moving ahead on. Uh, letters have gone out, um, to the residents, letting them know that legal action will be forthcoming. Uh, what we've found is when we send out, uh, this is another batch or group that we've gotten to, when we send out another, a number of letters with our tax title attorney's name on it, uh, we, uh, seem to see, see quite a few redemptions. Uh, once we've cleared those redemptions through the process, we will then, uh, move ahead, uh, with moving those to our, uh, tax title attorney. We've already collected 81,000 dollars since, uh, July 1, and that, uh, how, is how we have dispositioned the 1,204 right now in tax title. Moving ahead to the, uh, local receipts. The major drivers for our local receipts, um, motor vehicle excise, uh, put that in context, 65% of our local receipts are derived from motor vehicle excise tax. Um, the other excise for meals, um, the other excise for room tax, in particular, so the room tax, this is the first full year that the hotel's been operational. Um, and as a result, uh, we have now, uh, fully realized, uh, a, a baseline in which, uh, to project forward. Um, upwards, up, up until FY '18's results, we did not have a full year's worth of history. Uh, the, um, and that really makes up, uh, the majority of the, 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 the excise tax and other excise. Penalties and interest on, uh, on taxes and excise, the major driver for that number being up and a surplus of 402,000 dollars is because of the 771,000 dollars we collected, collected in tax title. A big portion of that, um, should be considered one-time revenue, just as the tax title revenue is, and a, as we get further along at the end, and how the free cash is allocated and how this contributed to it, I think you'll see the logic behind the allocation of those funds. Um, licenses and permits is another driver, fees another driver, licenses and permits was up 208,609. To give you a little graphical, uh, perspective of where we were in our thought process for budgeting in FY '18, and what actually happened, and I'm just going to pull out for this, uh, analysis purpose, the revenue sharing figures, because it's very important that we understand how this, our decision-making process impacts many. That's, uh, the, uh, general government, public safety, public works, and so forth, as well as, uh, the school system. So here, when we started things off, uh, the first thing we did in FY, uh, '18, uh, we said, let's be a little bit more aggressive in our estimating for local receipts. So in past practice, uh, and, and rightly so, past practice, you'd go back to, uh, the prior years, uh, local receipts, and you would budget 85% of those. So in this case, we would have budgeted 85% of FY '16 actual. What we ended up doing was budgeting 88% of FY '17 actuals when the dust settled. So that was definitely more aggressive than we had done in the past. Thinking of, uh, of that, we figured the max surplus that we might see is 613,000 dollars. Thinking of that, we figured the max surplus that we might see is $613,000. And that would occur if we collected 100% of FY 17's numbers. So in our thought process, we're thinking, well, if we do have a surplus, we know some of it will come from non-recurring penalty interest on taxes, and we would be looking to allocate that to the capital reserve. Or there'd be a surplus of 451,000 for all the other local receipt categories, which give us that total surplus of $613,000, which is really only 1.1% of our total operating budget in the general fund. So a nominal amount. What actually happened was, in this grouping, we had a surplus of 1,519,888. Again, historically high levels in your major categories. And below, without going into detail, you can see the drivers of these, same drivers that I pointed out in our projection. So there was, instead of having a $613,000 surplus in these areas, we had 1,520 roughly in these areas. Looking at these numbers historically, I think it shows a couple of things. First of all, I think it shows, if we look at the motor vehicle excise, what has happened since 2014, where we've come from and what we've trended, how we've trended, and what occurred in FY 18. So as you can see, there was an uptick pretty significantly from 14 to 15, and then we began to flatten out, 15, 16, 17. And then the spike in FY 18. I'll go into some of the details if you have questions on that. But we had no expectation that we would see a 17% increase. Now, what made that happen? A whole host of things. Number one, we have a great leader in the Treasury Collector's Office. We have fully implemented all the munis modules that hadn't been fully implemented. And in fact, we just finished this, this past fiscal year. We have a new online payment system that we're using now, Invoice Cloud, which is much more robust and is able to make collections after the due date, where our old system didn't allow for any payments of any tax bills, motor vehicle excise tax bills to be paid after the due date. It wasn't robust. It couldn't update with new information, which would include principal and interest. So that coupled with getting our protocols in place for getting the demands out on time, marking at the registry for those vehicles that hadn't paid their excise, excuse me, those taxpayers that hadn't paid their excise tax bill. The confluence of that came together, and as a result, that's why I believe we saw the spike in FY 18. There's some other things, but I won't go into detail on them. It has to do with purchasing habits and what I've gotten for anecdotal and factual based data around that. Meals, room, and boat, pretty straightforward. We made the big jump in FY 18. Why? Because we had the online hotel for one full year. That was the driver there. As you can see, prior to that, it was an incremental increase from 14 to 17. Penalties and interest on taxes, same thing. Huge uptick in FY 18. You can see graphically, as I alluded to a few moments ago. Here's a category that's interesting, licenses and permits. Notice the trend that has occurred from 14 down to 16, and then we had a spike in 17 and a slight downward trend in 18. I think what all of these speak to is that there's different degrees of variability in the different categories of local receipts that makes it challenging to do estimates for the next year, for the next three years, for the next three to five years. And by the nature of the beast, not being able to adjust and adapt during a fiscal year if revenues begin to trend downward, because the nature is the only way, place to go is either go to your reserves or to in fact make budget cuts. Even with our more aggressive approach in FY 18, clearly we outperformed that significantly. And if I went back to the last graphic, the tune of 130% of budget, excuse me, 130% of FY 17 actuals. So I just wanted to highlight that. Excuse me. Any questions on the revenue? I will move ahead to the expenditures.
Hold on here, Mr. Colomotus, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you go back to the third slide, which had, I think it was that one. Yeah, no, two ahead. No, one more. Yeah, that one. So we can see the receipts, accounts receivable is reduced by about 469 or so.
Yep.
And yet we collected about 700, you said?
Mm-hmm.
So then there was added, accounts receivable added to that total. So that's what accounts for that difference.
Yes.
So the outstanding is 1.2.
Yeah, there's two things that happen. You have subsequence. What that means is if you already have something in tax title, the next year, if those taxes aren't paid, you bring them into tax title and refer to them as subsequence. And then you also have new takings where someone has not been in tax title, and there's new taking. So every fall, there's an adjustment up. So this takes into account that, those activities.
One clear takeaway from this is that we had 1.6, almost 1.7 receivable last year, and we received 700. And so to assume anything close to 700 going forward would be foolish, right? Because now we're down to 1.2, so.
I think that's fair, given the graphic below that, yes.
Right, okay. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Just a couple of questions since we're on this slide. Just what does AFC stand for? I know it's not American Football Conference.
That's our tax title attorney's initials.
Okay, all right.
Author F. Quotaine.
And then to Mr. Colomotus's point.
Yes.
Low-value land, approximately 360,000, we're just throwing that away. We're not ever going to collect on it.
That's correct.
I remember someone telling me years ago that they got assessed, that they didn't even know if they even owned the land, but they got a bill for it, and it was a hill in the middle of a swamp somewhere off a cherry street.
That's a perfect, that's a perfect example.
And he's like, I'm just, I'm just not going to pay it. So that's the type of thing that's low-value land. You're in, on a hill in the middle of a swamp, well, yeah, why would anyone pay that?
That's correct.
Yeah, so there's only really approximately 850,000 or so out there that we could even collect among that AR.
That's correct.
And so to think we could get another 700 this year would probably not be the prudent thing to do.
That's correct, and I consider it one-time revenue.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you. A couple of questions. First, I'm starting the, my annual budget resolution work. Started already. Last year, we made a slight change from the year before, so question related to that, so we can plan ahead. You mentioned hotel tax was up greatly, so this is the second or third year. So.
First full year.
First full year, first full year. And it jumped from, I think, 70,000 to 150,000. So going forward, would we want to take again 85% of the 140, or do you want to stay more general than that?
I think that's the challenge. See, and that's the difficulty of trying to predict in a municipality, because then you've got to be able to look at the economic activity and behavior of hotels. You've got to look at the economic activity and behavior of meals tax. You've got to look at the economic behavior and patents of motor vehicle excise. So do you question, we have done yeoman's analytical work on the motor vehicle excise, and I think I can come up with a fair policy and somewhat predictable patent based on anecdotal. In fact, there's more work to be done on these other categories. So I wouldn't answer that at this point in time.
Two follow-ups, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Fitzgibbons. So I'm glad you mentioned excise tax. First of all, I got to tell you, and I've been doing this for a long time now, since the council was born, the numbers and the data that we're getting now are so, are like 1,000% better than the picture we were seven years ago. And excise tax is a clear example where you can track the year of every single vehicle and the prediction of that. So that was a huge jump this year, and we'll be able to roll forward on that. So that's a, that's a number that has a lot more confidence in it than maybe the hotel tax. The final question, I'll turn it over to somebody else, is we talked, not a lot of people attend the budget finance meeting, but we talked two meetings ago, I think it was, about the possibility of a change in structure around our capital stabilization and how we want to treat that as part of the budget resolution and budgeting principle in general. So one of the things that you had mentioned, I just want to highlight it here, so maybe you can spend a very small amount of time talking about it and just to get everybody's mind thinking about this, is the fact that our general stabilization has reached near its target of what we want to achieve as a municipality. And we might want to shift our overall use of funds away from a general number into a percentage of increase that matches maybe CPI or something like that.
That's what I'm thinking, yes.
Okay.
As well. If I could just make one comment on the motor vehicle excise, we had a, we were fortunate to have a, thank you, an intern. And so we went a little deeper, and I then checked it out with two major car dealerships. The percent of new vehicles purchased has, is up to 52%, excuse me, new vehicles that are purchased are leased. 52% of all vehicles that were purchased in FY 18 are leased vehicles. That's been another driver on our revenue, because in most leases are two or three years. So you get the max out of the excise tax in year one, two, and three, and they dispose of them and get a new vehicle to lease. I checked that and got a number from a Good Brothers Dodge who sees 45% to 50%. They're more trucks than anything, and Cork Jeep Chrysler dealership in Marshfield, and they're seeing 65%. So that can be a driver that we're going to look into a little deeper, but the intern helped us get some facts to that anecdotal information.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Sure. If you could, Mr. Solomonti, just step forward a couple of slides. I'll ask you to stop. Go back. No, go forward one more. All right, there we go. No, the $600,000, that's what I, that's what I was looking for.
Okay, there it is.
Okay, yeah. So when we, as a town, created our revenue estimate, it was our intention that we generate a surplus via local receipts. Is that correct? Or our hope, our expectation, whatever I want to say, but we planned conservatively for the revenue number. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that's really what I pointed, want to point out on this slide is, we said, all right, the most we think we could get out is 600,000. We want to be conservative and reasonable so that we don't overspend and we don't over-project the revenue. But, you know, if we do the same thing as we did last year, then this is what we're going to end up getting.
That's correct.
Okay, so forward to, yeah, next one.
One more?
Yeah, one more. Yes, this, motor vehicles excise tax. You spent a lot of time talking about, you know, how this is up quite a bit. And it sounds like some of it is due to new processes and procedures, and that can be counted on as kind of a new level. I mean, it looks like we were sitting at 3.3 million for a few years, and now we're at 3.9 or 4 million, whatever the number is. I can't really read it.
Close to four.
Yeah. So there's some amount of that that's going to be recurring, if you will, that because of our better processes and procedures, we can expect that new baseline might be 3.6, 3.7. The other part would be what I would call a good economy. I mean, we've heard about GDP increases and record-low unemployment, 50-year-low unemployment rates, et cetera, et cetera, that I see at least in the news. But that kind of stuff isn't that important to put away in a savings account for when we have 2008 happen again.
And that, in fact, the intent of our recommendation for the allocation of free cash, because if we go back to 2008, it required a $2.8 million, well, I think it was 11, you had a $2.8 million override. And if you put this in context, the $2.8 million override was a continuation of revenue, plus 2.5% of that. That said, if we were to have the same sort of economic downturn and try to get through it with no override, we could consume $5 million in just over two years. So we realize that we can't have $20 million in the bank. We need to have some money. And we know during a severe economic downturn, it'll be a combination of reserves and looking at headcount and looking at our expenses and coming up with a plan that helps us get through that time.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the licenses and permits, since it's, the screen is right there, fiscal '17 to fiscal '18, we saw, it looks like a 20% decrease from actual. However, we budgeted for fiscal '18, 560,000 or something like that, and we saw 771 come in. What was, do you have an idea what the driving force of that $200,000 difference was? And is, I mean, do you expect to be at that $800,000 level of fiscal '19?
I say we're in, I say we're in phase four of understanding our motor vehicle excise, okay? We're at the end of phase one in understanding our new growth. Upgrading our permitting software, creating a timeline for when we're capturing our new growth, being able to do analytics between one year and another and knowing the number of units, and then factoring into the pipeline what's before the planning board, the zoning board. Getting a process in place that I can capture that and give you a real straightforward answer is what we'll be doing over the next six months. So we're going to choose these major categories to do a better job at predicting and understanding. I can certainly get you that information. I'm sure in conversing with the town assessor, she would be able to summarize that. I do not have that information available at this point.
Because as we get ready to build fiscal '19, I mean fiscal '20 coming up in a couple of months, you know, the lease vehicle, you know, that's going on out there, is that a trend? Or is that something that's going to sustain itself going forward? Are more people going to, is that going to be the trend for the, for the consumer? Is to, that 52% goes to 60%? If that's the case, then, you know, we can keep those revenues higher. But if, if it's not, then, you know, we've got to understand, you know, I might not lease. My car's a year older. You know, someone else, you know, might get a new lease every three years or so. But as we build the fiscal '20 budget, and I've always said, you know, sometimes I think we're a little bit too conservative, and these numbers have come in quite higher than I think any of us have anticipated. And you've explained very decisively and professionally as to why. But, you know, as I look at it, we know there are needs on the highway department. We know there are needs in the schools and other departments. And, you know, we're in a good economy right now, and it's been pretty good for the past several years. When that's going to start to slow down, we don't know, but we want to be ready if it does. And I think we're in good shape for that. But at the same time, you know, I'm hoping we can help out some of these departments if we can.
Understood, and I have started some legwork. I went back to the gentleman from Good Brothers Dodge, and I said, what do you see trending over the next year? He says, I'm already starting to plan. Our new car sales are going to drop, and our used car sales are going to go up. When, when the economy gets bad, that person that's, that had a leased vehicle decides to buy that vehicle. Then they pay for it over five, so I'm trying to get inside the numbers, if you will. And I find it interesting that as a Commonwealth, that type of data and inside the numbers isn't there. Or maybe it's there, and I just haven't found it yet. But that's, that's exactly, I'm right with you. If I can, if I can feel comfortable in the number, I'll be more aggressive.
I have to say, that's, in working with you since I've been here and you've been here, it's probably the third or fourth time that you've mentioned taking a deep dive. here, it's probably the third or fourth time that you've mentioned taking a deep dive into the private sector to feed into what you're doing here, and I find that fantastic, very exciting to me to hear that. Go ahead, Mr. George.
So just a couple of things, a couple of questions. So I know that we're being fiscally responsible, which I totally understand, and I hope this doesn't come across as me wanting to be not responsible. But the one thing that I've seen that I would hope that we could maybe take into consideration some way, shape, or form is you're, I know you're using excise tax as an indicator of things of that nature. I think over the last five years, if I did my math correctly, our free cash has been over $8 million in free cash over the last five years, with a multitude of factors involved. I don't think there's really one thing in particular. But we talk about one-time revenue, but yet we're spinning off, on average, over the last five years, 1.6 million in excess revenue. And I'm not saying that we have to account for every penny, but I would really like to see us taking consideration, and I'm just throwing it out there, I'm not saying it has to be this way, of almost taking a, we'll say a five-year average of free cash, taking a percentage of that and putting it into the revenue estimates, so that we're not only relying on one indicator to try to drive that number, or we'll say percentages of things of that nature, but with the understanding that first, we want to have free cash. I mean, you know, as Councilor Woodlock points out to me all the time, we're in the negative, which was true. But I think earlier on, when the, when the orders were here, I know we have to build up reserves, but I don't want to build up reserves at the cost of our day-to-day operations as, you know, Councilor Gallagher brought up. So I would hope, maybe, you know, down there, you look at it that way, of taking that and putting that into the calculation. And again, I think if you do a percentage of the average, if we do run into a tough time, two things, one, we've got the reserves, but the other thing is if we're taking a even estimate of that, a conservative estimate, that gap, at least for one year, shouldn't put us in the poorhouse, but again, that does tell us to tap the brakes. And, you know, I'm looking at it from just the things that we want to do on a, you know, a lot of it has to do with staffing and things of that nature, that I would love to be able to go next year going into it and say, look, there's some departments that sorely need bodies, that we just can't tell them anymore, no, we, you know, we have to get them that. And I think part of it too is taking some maybe non-traditional revenue expectations and bringing those into the calculation.
I think we're, we're at a point now we can think more strategically. And that's because of the work that's been done for five years, you know, six years. And the free cash that you're seeing is a result of turning things, turning the ship around. And so I understand where you're coming from.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you for that report. What we're going to do is another short recess, so the next...
Wait a second, would you like to see the expenses?
Oh.
Yeah, we want to see where it's spent.
Let's go over that part.
I'll move more quickly.
Look at some money go.
That was halftime?
It's halftime.
Whoa, Teddy boy.
So I'll just, a little quicker on these because I think the, I think the revenue is where the discussion would have, I expected it to go. So on the expense side, in summary, at the top of it, you can see that our surplus was The snow and ice deficit is 505, so if you add that back, and why do you add that back? Because we've already accounted for raising that $505,000 with our revenue that we're estimating for FY19. So in fact, that $505,000 flows to your undesignated fund balance for free cash purposes. In other words, the DOR doesn't hit your fund balance for a snow and ice deficit, which is a legal deficit. So we picked up $617,000 on the expense side. In summary, you can see 74 from general government, 157 from public safety, 89 from education. You can see the snow and ice deficit is buried in the public works with net to 430, 54 in health and human services, 144 in unclassified benefits, and then about $24,000 in unclassified expenses. That gets you to your surplus. I won't go into detail unless you have questions afterwards, but I have it by general government, public safety, education, public works. We have some detail, and I can send this PowerPoint presentation out to you, and the remaining groupings that shows the 111 at the bottom. I think there's also a graphic that shows it for you where your expenditure surplus came to, where it came from, and it's about 1.2% of your operating budget. So that attributed to your free cash calculation. So that's, that's good budgeting, expenses coming in under what we thought, becoming more diligent in our practices as it relates to our liability insurances, how we handled the SAFER grant, and where we were charging some of the salaries in health benefits, and how we were able to charge off the full SAFER grant, which didn't hit the general fund, us for the firefighters. So that impacted these numbers. So without going in detail, those are some of the major things that drove this surplus.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
If we could go back one slide, please. Yeah, so at the bottom line there, our original budget was 53.2 million, and then our revised budget was 56 million. That's a...
And I just want to be clear that...
Huge, that's a huge increase.
Just to be clear on that, the transfer out of 2579, those are really non-budgetary items, but we have to record that we're transferring free cash to another fund, so you should look at the 55996 less the 2,579 to get a true revised picture. Does that make sense?
Sort of. So...
Okay.
But at the end of the day, so what you're saying is, we got free cash back of some amount?
Correct.
And we assigned it to various places, and that's what that 2 million is.
That's correct.
And so, and so really, the difference between what our budget and finance committee worked on and what we actually spent was only about $500,000.
Correct.
Okay, just so everyone was clear on that. I mean, I don't want people to think by looking at this that, you know, we said, oh, we're just going to spend $2.6 million more than we planned on. That, that wouldn't make sense.
That's correct, and thank you for pointing that out. And that is right here in this number. Again, when you voted last year to transfer money out of the general fund, we have to account for it. So that's not part of the actual operating budget, but it is in fact part of the presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you. I have, on the transfer station, I mean, we hear sometimes from our town manager and that, you know, they're not, revenue and expenses are not matching up at all. So the spreadsheet that I got over the weekend on the transfer station, it, it shows an original budget, a revised budget, an actual budget, and all three, the actual budget is less than the other two amounts. So on the revenue side, it says at the top here, and I don't know if that's on there, something I printed out.
No, I don't have the enterprise fund.
It says, transfer from general fund, $103,000. What, where would that have come from?
There was, it would have come from an order placed before you and to offset a potential deficit in the transfer station.
Okay, so it would probably come from free cash or something.
Could I, could I tie something together that I just asked him? So, Mr. Somanti, you were just talking about the 2.6 million. So if I remember what I read over the weekend, which I can't remember what I had for breakfast, so don't trust me on this, was that we saw the transfer station end the year with positive free cash. Is that a true statement?
At the end of the year?
Yeah, according to DOR.
Yes, correct.
But sometime during the year, we moved $130,000 out of our general fund to it.
Correct.
And I don't believe it was as big as $130,000 that we ended up free cashed out of the transfer station.
No.
I think it was around 30-ish, if I remember the number right.
That's correct.
I might be off. But the 130 went through that 2.6 million, and it ended up in the transfer station. Now the transfer station says, all right, we ended the year with a positive balance, but only because the general taxpayers of the town of Bridgewater threw $130,000 at you. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So, but, you know, the original budget and the actual budget were really only about $40,000 apart.
We also had a revenue deficit, so when we transferred in, we probably took care of some of it in the budget side and some of it on the revenue side. So from accounting purposes, to Mr. Fitzgibbons' point, it would equate to approximately $130,000 in total. We had a deficit from the prior year, we had a raise on the recap, and then we were running into a deficit at the end of this fiscal year. Long and short of, I can say this, our objective in FY19, and we've begun working on it, is really get a handle on it. We have time and resources now for the first time. General fund is in a much, much better place, as you know, and we need to start looking at that operation, and we've already begun to do so.
Right. And I hope that it stays in operation. I think that things have turned around, and, you know, I won't go into it, but the golf course seems to be, you know, needed a little help too during the year, and hopefully that'll be sorted out with no more debt service having to be paid out of that, at least for the land piece.
Yes.
Looks good.
So just to finalize, all of you have realized what our free cash number is. I won't have to go into detail if you don't require this evening. This has been presented to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, and all it does is break down what, how we derived at our 3.634 million in free cash. And the way we looked at it logically was to separate the revenue into two categories, one being that which is revenue sharing, because in our mind, when we go to put money in the general fund stabilization fund, that's also in there for school, because in our revenue sharing model, we share with the school, and in economic downturn, we share with the school. On the, in the same vein, with the revenue sharing contribution to our free cash, we would put money into the capital stabilization fund so that we can allocate some of our revenue sharing to the school for their capital needs. I think you saw in order four or five months ago where we put $200,000 in our general capital fund for the school when they put in a request for expenditure. So you can see how we took the $2,290 and we allocated it into those two buckets. That was the thought process. Down into the surplus for non-revenue sharing categories, that's your fees that we charge to offset expenses. One example might be master box inspections that are done by the fire department. Well, they got to go out there, spend hours out there, may have a number of individuals out there doing the inspection, and we generate a fee to offset that, that, that cost. So if you take the recurring minor category and non-recurring other categories, we come up with about $141,000. We had a small surplus, as I pointed out, in veterans' benefits and some abatements in the cherry sheet, and so we looked at that as, let's make our contribution out to our OPEB stabilization fund of $100,000 this year from this non-revenue sharing category. And the remaining balance, we put into the one-time unforeseen. Some of the things that you've done with one-time unforeseen is, I believe, your zoning study that you put up, put up $175,000. I believe that came from the one-time unforeseen balance. And then lastly, appropriations, $617,000. We put 400, recommending 400 in the capital stabilization, 217, and to employee liability stabilization, that's for your sick leave buyback, vacation buyback for retirees. And then, this is the lowest, if you look at your free cash certification document from FY18, and you were to pull up your 17, you'll see offsets or reductions to your free cash amount. This is the lowest offset that there's been that I can see on record. There was only $35,000. What does that mean? It means the last five years of work that your staff, your town manager, your assistant town manager, your finance department has cleaned up major issues that were impacting your free cash, that were derivatives from other funds. So that has taken years of work to recapture that which could not flow to your free cash because the DOR says, uh-uh, you have these problems out in these other funds that, that are showing deficit. That was to a tune of $567,000. We want to put $300,000 of that in the capital stabilization fund and 267 into the one-time. If you look at the very bottom, 50% is, of the free cash is being allocated in this recommendation to the general fund stabilization, 32 to capital, 3% to OPEB, 6 to other employee liabilities, and 9% to your one-time unforeseen. This will put our free, our stabilization fund balance at 5.3 million, our capital at 1.2, OPEB at 443, 378, and 518 respectively. So that's the basis of our recommendation, looking at the flow. I look at money as water, it's coming from a source, and that source directs to a source that makes logical and strategic sense. And that's the thought process that I presented to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee and to the town manager and assistant town manager. I won't go into a lot of detail on this, I think we've covered where we've come from, but there's a slide in here that you can see. Another major driver is, at the bottom line, 77% of your undesignated fund balance was converted into free cash. That's the highest that it's ever been, as far as I can tell on record. You had problems back in '14, where only 34% of your undesignated fund balance got converted into free cash. That has to do with all the work that's been done. And graphically, you can see where your stabilization fund balance was in '14 and where it sits now in 2019, if this allocation recommendation is followed through the order that gets presented to you folks. Higher general fund stabilization reserves allow the town to think and act more strategically. When we borrow, we should be able to borrow at a cheaper rate. We will have S and P complete a rating. A better rating reduce our cost of borrowing. When making staffing decisions and negotiating with our collective bargaining units, we need to think in terms of what is sustainable. We will update our five-year forecast to include various staffing and economic scenarios, being mindful not to create a structural deficit. You will have that information before we go into the FY19, excuse me, '20 budget process. I'm in multiple years, please excuse me. High capital reserves, a more significant source of funding for our capital needs, and I think you're all aware of what the demands are in a town's capital need. Conclusion, we continue to monitor economic climate, local receipt trends, state aid trends, new growth trends, unemployment trends. Be sound in our budgeting and long-term financial forecasting, update our five-year forecast, mindful to allow, not to allow key cost drivers, wages and benefits to outpace our revenue growth. And if you look at the contracts that you've been approving lately, I think you can see that we're being prudent and mindful of this. Continue to just be disciplined and methodical in our decision-making process and address our capital needs. And I thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. And Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, just to address a couple of the last points there. First of all, that upward trend from 1.8 to 1.6 million, I think one slide back or two slides back, up to where it's at five something now.
Yes.
That, that speaks to the incredible work that was done by the finance department to get things right operationally, in my opinion, the first and foremost. work that was done by the finance department to get things right operationally, in my opinion, the first and foremost. You don't have to take credit for it. I'm giving you the credit.
It's a team, it's a team, and it's also the prudent financing.
I'm giving you the credit on that one. So, let's go, let's go to the next slide. And, and the next slide, sorry. Thank you. Yeah, all the way through. So, under the second big bullet, the second small bullet, mindful not to allow key cost drivers, wages and benefits to outpace our revenue growth. Now, occasionally when you come here, Mr. Salamanti, I pay attention to you, and it seems like we're increasing revenue as a town at about 3% a year. It's what I remember, 3.1, 3, 3.2.
Our revenue was at some point.
Somewhere in that, in that range, if I remember.
Yes, sir.
So, if, if we as a bargaining, on, on the management side, in bargaining, give away across the entire contract, I'm not, I'm not saying any particular item, but if we look in value with the whole contract, year over year, as increasing at 3.5 or 4%, whether it be actual cash payments, or the expected rate of inflation of healthcare benefits, or you know, not paying increases but giving longevity or sick leave buyback. But when we look at the whole contract, not any particular line.
Yes.
This is what I'd like to make sure we do going forward, is that those whole contracts need to come in three or better to make things work and not create that structural deficit that you were talking about, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
To that point, in each negotiation, we begin with a fully loaded cost of contract, includes health insurance, Medicare, and we show the bargaining unit what the total cost of that contract is going to be, and we take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Anyone else? One burning question. Is that intern still around to do all that?
Lucky him, he's in Paris finishing another intern, and hopefully we'll have him back in January.
Okay, excellent. So that wraps up Mr. Salamanti's.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, great job. So in order for the water and sewer folks to get connected, we're gonna take another recess so they can plug in. Yes. Phil, the water and sewer update can commence.
Jonas Kizlosis, good evening. I asked our engineering firm to come in and do a presentation on all the projects that are going on between the water and the sewer. We use Stantec as the engineering firm, and George Allen and Katie Chamberlain will take care of the water side of it, and Steve Calabro will take care of the wastewater side of it. If there's any questions, we can, I'll be free to answer them. George Allen.
Good evening, councilors. My name is George Allen, and as Jonas said, we have a couple of more folks here with me, Katie Chamberlain and Steve Calabro. So we'd like to give you an overview of the water and sewer operations. I'll address the water. Katie and I will address the water, and then Steve will do the, do the wastewater. First, to give some idea of the water supply situation in terms of water usage. So in 2017, the average day demand was 1.6 million gallons a day. Maximum day demand was 2.12 million gallons a day. That typically obviously is occurring sometime during the summer, and I think in 2017, it was probably in June. So where does that water come from? Well, you've got 10 active wells in three different aquifers. You have a High Street, you have a Carver's Pond, and then the third one is out on Plymouth Street, halfway between East Street and Pond Street, where there are two wells. The Carver's Pond Water Treatment Plant is one of your largest sources of supply. And, and what we're trying to do is, under current exploration, in terms of getting additional capacity out of existing supply, we're looking at a well exploration around two sites, one at Carver's Pond and one down at Plymouth Street, to try and get additional water out of those two wells. Over a period of time, the wells tend to plug up and they're not as efficient as they typically are, and you can usually move a short distance away, 50 feet, and get a better production well and get back to your original capacity. And the town has already done that in two locations, down at, down at Carver's Pond. So we're investigating that now to see if we can get additional water out of two presently underutilized wells. In addition to that, in terms of in the future, in terms of a water bank, the, the water department has two approved well sites, approved by DEP that can be developed at a future time. The town owns land, owns the land on both of these sites. On Vernon Street, right near the high tension lines, there's two rock wells in place, and those rock wells are 500, 600 feet deep. And then down on Beach Street, there's another supply down there. So between the two of them, it's gonna be about 700,000 gallons a day. Somewhere down the road, you have that in a water bank that you could develop for future supply. It will probably require treatment, as most of the wells in town do. Terms of water storage, you've probably all seen the two water storage, one on Sprague Hill at the corner of High and Broad Street, which owns 3.8 million gallons. The other one in Great Hill down by the college owns 1 million gallons. So your well provided for in storage. And the purpose of those two storage tanks is to maintain your water system pressure, to provide water for fire, and to also meet your peak demands, which are obviously typically, typically in the summer. So those are the, the functions that those storage tanks provide. One of the other key issues that's developing all across the Commonwealth is the Water Management Act. The Water Management Act basically goes back to 1986, when it was enacted. And the purpose of it is to control the amount of water that is withdrawn from the ground. So every town, every municipal water supply, and some private water supplies also, have a permit. And your current permit has a maximum amount of 2.4 million gallons a day. That is made up of two numbers. The two numbers are amount that is so-called registered within that permit, and that is the amount of water that was attributed to supplies that were in in operation in 1985, before the act went into account, when it was enacted. And the ones that have a permit are new wells that were put online after 1986. So you have two numbers, the total 2.4 million gallons. The, the DEP is presently going through a renewal process for all municipal wells, and they're doing it on a river basin by river basin. So the Taunton River Basin, which you folks are in, is currently beginning its renewal process. And probably within the next month or so, we would expect the DEP will be reaching out to the town, to the water department, to talk about reissuing a new permit, and these permits last 20 years. One thing I think you can expect is the new permit will be less than what you currently have. We're expecting it's gonna be about 1.83 million gallons a day. Now, if you remember the, the first slide, and don't need to go back to it, Katie, but the first slide, your, your average day demand in 2017 was 1.6 million gallons a day. So the 1.83 million gallons a day is something that we need to keep in mind going forward. Now, during this process, you can make the case with DEP regarding needing additional capacity. So when this permit is being developed, it'll be starting shortly, the town will have input into that 1.83 million gallons a day. And what the state is looking at now, they're putting more emphasis on maintaining minimum stream flows. That's the big driver on all this, maintaining minimum stream flows in all the basins. So we're seeing a reduction typically in those permit numbers. Some of the current projects that are going on, the new water meters, Phase 1 started in the summer of 2016 is completed, and that addressed the college and all the commercial services in town. Phase 2 is currently underway, and that's the one that's ongoing, and it's addressing all the residential meters, of which there are about 6,900 of those, and there's been about 1,300 plus or minus, it changes every week, but it's about 1,300 have been completed to date, and we expect that'll be, be wrapped up after the first of the year. There's a water main project that'll be going out to replace existing water mains on Hayward Street and Wall Street. This is in conjunction with the water depart, with the highway department, water and highway coordinating this, so that these new mains will go in prior to the highway department repaving both of those streets, which are gonna take place next year. And later on this fall, the roof on the Carver's Pond Water Treatment Plant will be approved, and I think it's one of your items, the last item on the, the agenda for transfer tonight. The large future project that you're probably all familiar with is gonna be a water treatment plant down on High Street that's gonna treat four of the wells down at, down at High Street. And Katie's been closely involved in this project, so I'd like her to kind of fill you in on some of the schedules and give you some idea of where we are on, on that project.
Good evening. So as you all probably know, we got going on this project a little while ago. I think about a year ago, we finished up the preliminary design. And now we've been working on the final design for the past two months or so. So we have a quick little update here on what's going on with that project, and just to refresh everyone's memory, what this water treatment plant is designed for is for iron and manganese removal, and obviously also disinfection of your water. Previously, there was no official treatment plant associated with these wells, so this is gonna be a big improvement to the water quality, hopefully. On top of just the water treatment plant building, we've also decided that there's going to be an addition attached to that water treatment plant building that's gonna include admin space for the water and sewer department. It's gonna have a conference room area, office space for all of the staff, all in one location, kitchenette area, so really functional for everyone that needs to use the space. Also, in addition to just the water treatment plant building, we have added a pretty large garage facility that's adjacent to the building so that you guys can do any maintenance that needs to be done right there, on-site, store your vehicles and do all kinds of larger maintenance items inside, under the cover of a roof. There's also, there's the maintenance garage facility, that's just right across the street there. We'll also be doing an upgrade to that, where we'll be building on a little bit of an extra space. We'll be increasing the size of that building by approximately 30, 33% or so, just to provide more space for the staff that use that facility on a day-to-day basis. There'll be some locker facilities, a break room, so that they can have their lunches there and kind of convene and be able to do what they need to do on a daily basis. Additionally, there's the system-wide SCADA system upgrades, so along with the new water treatment plant, there'll be a lot of controls that have to go into just making sure that the treatment operates correctly. In addition to upgrading the controls there, or putting new controls there, we're rolling in SCADA improvements to all of the facilities across the town. So Carver's Pond has a SCADA system now that needs some upgrades. We're gonna tie it all together. The pump stations across town, the water storage tanks around town, they're all gonna be tied together in one kind of control hub at the new water treatment plant. So that's all included in this water treatment plant project. And then you guys are probably familiar with this number, estimated cost is at 10.4 million dollars, and that includes all of those things listed above. This will be funded through an SRF loan. The, we submitted the initial project evaluation form for the SRF funding about a month ago, mid-August, so that's in process. You know, we have to wait for the state to review things and issue their project priority list and their official rulings on everything, and that typically happens in the fall sometime. So we should hear back in the next couple of months as to where this project lists on their rankings. And this is just, I wanted to put in a pretty picture, so you guys, we are working on stuff. I got an architect to pull together a 3D rendering for me today, and this is the, what we're proposing to be the new water treatment plant. This front part of the building here. This front part of the building here is the admin offices portion of it, and then the taller portion back there is the actual treatment part of the plant. You know, they'll be fully separated by, if the building inspector were here, he could probably tell you more than I can, but you know, they have to be fully separated by firewalls and everything like that. But you can freely, Jonas will be able to freely kind of go between the admin office and the treatment area, all in one spot. So it'd be really nice. And we, you can go ahead to the schedule, I think that's the next slide? Yeah. So right now, we're right in the thick of pulling together the 60% design deliverables. We are on schedule for delivering those to the town on October 12, so that's just a couple of weeks away here. We'll hand that over, and then the following week, we hope to have a sit-down review meeting to go over any of the town's comments. And then, we don't have another delivery of plans and specs until the 90%, which will be December 21st. We kind of wanted to get to a good point before the holiday break, and everyone forgets how to do work for a little bit of time. So that's the plan there, get some plans in, and then meet with the town again, right after the holiday break, and go over review comments. And then, at that point, by the time December comes around, we will know about the SRF loans. But you still have to submit with your 90% or 100% documents, depending on how you feel about the 90%. You need to submit that to the SRF program to get final approval for the funding. So we have kind of identified January 25th as the date that we would be submitting the final SRF application to the state. In the meantime, there's also a bunch of permitting that's going on. I don't have it in the schedule, because there's no hard deadlines, but there's a lot of, you know, just environmental permits, as well as wanting to work with the building inspector, the, you know, the town committees that need to be involved in the planning and zoning and stuff like that. So there's all kinds of stuff like that, that will be going on between 60% and 90%. So you'll probably be hearing more about things going on. And then ultimately, we would like to be done with the 100% by February 22nd. And then, so the plan here is that the construction contract would actually be awarded, and under contract, in April of this year, hopefully by the end of that month. And then you get another, what's that, year and four months or so of construction period? That's the, you know, current anticipated schedule. All right? Any questions about water? George and I can take those now. Maybe?
Yeah, I got a question. I have one question. On the, I forgot that acronym, the daily capacity, or the daily usage?
Average day.
There you go. Does that include the university or the?
MGD, merely genuine draft.
Does that include the university or the correctional facility, or do they have their own water?
It includes the university, but not the prison.
The prison does? Okay. So, I mean, if we have some developments going in, say, an average, I mean, I don't know if you know the answer, I mean, say, 100 units going in, what would 100 units do to increase that capacity? And when you go in to ask for a, if they do reduce that 2.40 down to 1.83, is, would your argument be, you know, we have a university here, so, you know, we, you know, don't want to take a half of a hit on that capacity? Is that would be part of your strategy, or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, that would, that would be part of the strategy, and especially as the university builds new dorms, for example, takes in more students, increased population, obviously that would be part of the discussion. Residential development, which has been quite a bit recently, that would also be in there. And typically what you could use for, to determine what a new, new home would generate, again, on an average basis, typically in Bridgewater, the average per capita per day usage is about 55 gallons per capita per day. So if a new house has four people, 220 gallons a day. So you could, you could use that as a rough approximation, and that would be the type of discussion with the DEP, would probably even up it to maybe 65 gallons per capita per day, because that's what they allow. You're running under it. But we would use that 65 gallons per capita per day to make a, to make a case for additional, additional capacity.
Thank you.
Is that a general formula that is being used to apply for that, to ask for the reduction, or in the Reduction Act, or whatever they're pushing through? So you had an estimate of what you think they're going to come and say?
Yeah, that number, that 1.83 million gallons, what we are anticipating it'll be, is what they've been using before, and what they've been doing is they've been using previous, previous consumption figures, then they have made, they have already, they, DEP with, combination with DCR, have already made some population projections. So they've taken your, the years 2005 to 2008, they've taken those, that average, then they have made some estimates in terms of population projections forward. And that's how they've, they've come up with that approximate number, that's what we estimate it's going to be. But they, you know, when they were making these projections, that was, that was years ago, because this permit renewal was supposed to take place back in 2008, 2009. It got postponed for several years, and then there were freezes put on it, it was very controversial. So now it's just moving forward. So I think there's room for discussion and negotiation on that number, and have the information to support requests for anything beyond that, and the college obviously would be part of that.
Right. Other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Colomos.
Can you break down that 1.83 and what uses, what are some of the main drivers of that? Like, what percentage of that is people flushing toilets? Is that?
Oh.
Is that a big percentage?
I don't know if we could do that. Maybe we could, maybe we could add up the average day usage, and then figure out what the average day is through the wastewater treatment plant, maybe we can figure out how much.
I guess I'm just thinking that, I mean, if we get down, if we're, you know, brought down a 1.83 allowance, I know a lot of towns suffer from that, that availability of water really put a restriction on development, and so this can be a real problem. And I'm wondering what a municipality might do to reduce consumption. Are there, I know, are there ever programs where you provide subsidy for installation of low-flow toilets, or stuff like that? Where conservation would?
Yeah, and I think in the past, the water department has done that, has done some, they received a grant years ago, maybe eight, 10 years ago, from DEP to not only showerheads, but I think they had some putting in low-flow toilets. But DEP occasionally comes up with programs, grant programs, and postal loan programs, that would encourage that, with the low showerheads, or the low-flow toilets, and stuff like that. But, you know, I mean, I mean, like I said, the state uses 65 gallons per capita per day, Bridgewater is 55. So from a conservation point of view, the town is already doing a pretty good job.
Right.
You know, in terms of the amount of water that's being used, I mean, you look out west, what people use out there, it's hundreds of gallons per capita per day. And obviously, the biggest demand is during, during the summer, when that's when the 2.1 million gallon a day kicks in. So you can attribute, if you took the average day and looked at, you know, peak day, you can kind of figure out how much is due to irrigation, I guess.
Right. Yeah, I would just hate to see sort of development kind of hampered by lack of water. I'm just wondering how we can address that.
Yeah, see, the problem is you're not going to be hampered by pumping capacity, you're going to be hampered by restriction of using that.
Right.
You're going to have sufficient pumping capacity, especially with some of the augmentation we've been talking about, in terms of getting additional water out of existing wells. So it's going to be more a function of DEP squeezing back. Again, the driver is going to be maintaining minimum August flows in all these rivers and streams. And when they get below certain levels, that triggers more, more restrictions on day-to-day operations. So that typically is the driver.
Thank you.
Let me ask you this. We go, there is a restriction put on it, and we go over it. I mean, they don't just shut the big switch off, do they?
No.
What's that, now do we get, we have to pay for this? Do we get fined, or what's that process?
Well, typically, they allow an additional 100,000 gallons a day over January anyway. So the 1.83 could be 1.93, for example. But what they would do is, no, they'd come back and they'd, you know, want to try to work with you in terms of trying to do mitigation, and that might be more onsite disposal of stormwater. So they would work, there's certain devices that they would work with the town to do. So it's not going to be a thing where you're going to be fined, or you're going to turn off all the pumps, or anything like that. So it would be a process.
Sure. Great information.
Okay. Okay, I think Steve Calabro will talk a little bit about the wastewater.
All right, well, I'll try to go, I'll try to go quick. Wastewater is always the last. Again, my name is, my name is Steve Calabro. Thank you for having us here. So I wanted to just touch on three things. We just finished up a big sewer rehab project, I wanted to touch base on that. We went through a major process to get our NPDES permit for the wastewater treatment plant. And now we're just starting to work on the upgrade of it. So just a little bit about the town system. You have 35 miles of gravity sewer ranging in size from 6 to 15 inch. You've got 15 miles of low-pressure sewer, which is a lot smaller. You've got eight town-owned pump stations, seven privately-owned pumping stations that are a little bit on the bigger side. And you have a treatment plant that's rated at 1.44 million gallons per day. That's the average daily flow. This is a graphic of the system. What is in dark blue is the area of town that's served by the wastewater treatment plant that has wastewater service. So if you look at that 1.44 MGD of wastewater capacity, and you compare it to what George and Katie have been talking about, about 1.83 million gallons per day, the difference is the fact that not everyone in town is served by the treatment plant. So the sewer rehab project, we set some goals when we started that project. We wanted to identify deteriorated sewer lines and get them rehabilitated. We didn't want collapses in the street. Wanted to tighten up the system to remove infiltration and inflow. That's going too fast, Katie. Okay. So we wanted to tighten up the system. When you remove II, you reduce the flow at the treatment plant, and you can use that capacity for development. And then the third item is we wanted to be, use proactive inspection and rehabilitation to reduce any reactive emergency repairs. Reactive emergency repairs cost a huge amount of money. We helped Jonas get through one of those. The cost ended up to be a staggering $150 a foot to replace a collapsed sewer, where we're doing rehab at $60 a square foot. So it's really very cost-effective. This is an example of typically what we found. The two pictures on the top are video pictures of, you know, a lot of root intrusion, you know, bad joints. And the picture at the bottom is once everything was cleaned out and it was rehabbed with a plastic insert liner, which will, you know, should last another 50 or 60 years. So just a quick project summary. The final cost of the project was 2.45 million dollars. Our original budget was 5 million. We found some of the systems to be in a little better condition, so of course, we didn't rehab that. And we did get SRF funding for that project. We rehabbed almost 26,000 linear feet of sewer, almost five miles, and we did 550 linear feet by open cut. We found some sewers that were so bad, they couldn't be lined, and we had to fix them by open cut, but at least we could do that in a controlled manner. And we, we did some manhole rehabilitation at the same time. We did 75 manhole rehabilitations, 50 new frame and covers, that's what you see at grade. And we did, we found some sewers had underdrains that were allowing water to come up from the groundwater, and we got rid of those, we plugged those all up. So from an II removal standpoint, after we finished the project, we did look at some of the flow records at the plant. We did notice a reduction in peak flows, like when it rains, that the treatment plant does a huge increase in flow. That was greatly reduced. The day-to-day II reduction, we couldn't really see that, except for the guys that run the plant mentioned that they saw lower flows, and they saw the concentration of the wastewater more concentrated, which really means that a lot of the extraneous clean water was being taken out of the system. I just wanted to touch base on the NPDES permit. Your town administrator was very, very helpful in this process. So again, our goals were basically to get, get the permit renewed, so the treatment plant could keep running and avoid fines and penalties from, from the EPA. The second goal was to try to get the most favorable permit terms possible for the town. And the third goal was really to try to extend the compliance period, so that you could do a little bit better proactive planning of expenditures to actually do the improvements of the plant that the permit was going to require. So just in summary, we did get the permit renewed. It was renewed in 9/30/16. There were no fines or penalties assessed, which was good. We did get reasonable nitrogen and phosphorus limits, those are nutrient limits that you probably hear a lot about. They were pretty typical for the area, for New England. Total nitrogen requirement is five milligrams per liter, and the total phosphorus limit is 0.2 milligrams per liter. Both of those limits cannot be met by the existing treatment plant. The key thing is that we did get, the permit initially came with a full compliance requirement of five years, to meet both the nitrogen and phosphorus limit, plus some other work. And, you know, with some negotiations with EPA, and some meetings in Boston, and some good work by the town administrator, we got that extended from five years to 10 years. So there's a 10-year period to do the upgrade of the plant, to meet the permit requirements. So as far as the, the actual upgrade of the treatment plant goes, there's going to be some pre-engineering tasks that are going to start early in 2019. We're going to be conducting some pilot treatment studies to try to figure out what the best, most cost-effective method will be to try to meet the new nutrient nitrogen phosphorus limits. And then, the total upgrade, right now, we were able to get the EPA to agree that we can do it in two phases. So it'll be two separate contracts. You can do one contract, get it done, get everything set, and then do the planning and do the second contract. And right now, the total cost expected for the plant, this is very early in the process, it's going to be in the range of $30 million all-in for both contracts, including engineering. And right now, there's, the SRF loan program will be used for that, and we're hoping to utilize a portion of the SRF program for nutrient removal, we can get 0% interest. So that $30 million cost will be spread over a 20-year payback period. And that's all I had on wastewater, and happy to entertain any questions?
Mr. Wood?
You'd mentioned capacity and area where there's sewer lines. But do the earlier calculations that you pointed out also include drop-offs by the companies doing septic cleanouts? So at the, at the plant?
Yeah, at the plant, yes.
Because I, DuBois, I think, drops.
Yes, yeah, people, people, yeah, people pump out, there's companies that pump out people's septic systems.
So the amount you were talking about, the 1.44, does that include other deliveries, or just the internal system?
No, all the deliveries, right. Deliveries of septic, yes. Yep. And they're paid, they're charged a fairly significant fee for that drop-off, they don't get that for free.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Big question.
Sure.
So I live downtown.
Yep.
And every once in a while, on a nice crisp morning... And every once in a while, on a nice crisp morning, I get this real funky thing going on with, you can smell in the air for a few, few years now, maybe, maybe a little longer than a few years. Will all these millions of dollars prevent me from having that smell when I wake up in the morning?
Uh, that's a good question. So the treatment plant itself will have state-of-the-art odor control. One of the things we're looking at is there's a composting facility that's part of it that's very open to the atmosphere. And so I, I think we're going to be doing a little analysis to see if that really makes sense or not to keep, keep that composting operation. If your, if your location is in that area, this will solve that problem. I'm not sure how far you are from the treatment plant.
I'm about a mile and I can smell it sometimes.
You smell it sometimes, yeah.
Yeah, we're downwind.
We called the fire department one morning because the smell was so bad, yeah.
Right. So, so again, the treatment plant itself will have state-of-the-art odor control. I'm not sure what, what your odor might be.
It's the same odor.
It's the same, okay.
Yeah.
So you're getting wafting, wafting from the treatment plant, probably?
It's the composting.
It's the composting.
Yeah, as soon as you said composting, I mean, you're tilling that stuff up, it's going to.
I live down by Bridgewater Farm Supply and I can smell it.
You can smell it, right, right.
So this is good news?
Yeah.
Is what I'm hearing.
Right. So composting is a very effective way to get rid of the residual sludge that's generated, but it does have a lot of odor issues. A lot of communities have gotten, gotten rid of it. And I think we're going to be doing a little study to look at, you know, the options for, you know, if you don't compost, you have to take those, that material someplace else.
Can I take that "I think" and turn that into "it is happening" so I can say something to the population?
We have the guys who lock them down, they take compost. We have local businesses take them and it's open to the public for Bridgewater residents to take. Good for gardens, trees, landscaping. So that's kind of like a, a reach out to the residents. And in the summertime, they're there almost every day, taking batches of it in their cars and their trucks. So yeah, we are looking at the odor control portion of it all, but it's still a good community service, too.
I know, my sister lives in Bristol, Rhode Island.
Mrs. Souza?
They have one there.
Oops, sorry.
Please, I'm sorry, may I? Oh. She lives in Bristol, Rhode Island, they have a system similar to what you're talking about. She's been there for about 15 years. She says she lives about 200 feet away. You don't smell anything over there. There's all, it's all enclosed and, and it's all done and, yeah, it's, it's prior to that, that's what they had.
Well, we're talking, the last time the plant was upgraded was 1988, so. Right, right. So, so that is one of the options that we'll look at. I mean, do we take the composting operation and completely enclose it and provide its own odor control? Or does it make more sense to, to basically take that sludge and take it down to Cranston, Rhode Island, where they, where they burn it in their incinerators?
That's a pretty huge cost.
And yeah, charge you $700,000 or $800,000 a year to get rid of the sludge.
My, my main concern was just that, that, that's great. We're going to be working towards it, there's, there's people on it, there's studies being, being had because it's not just my, myself, this is something we see pop up, I'm sure folks in your, your precinct. That's, that's great news. I actually talked to the town manager recently and since you're here, I'd like to get a tour at some point, so I'll connect with you and take a tour over there and talk, maybe visualize where we're, next steps are going with good water, bad water stuff.
Right.
Excellent. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Colomodos?
Thank you. I know we're, we're looking into reconfiguring the traffic patterns around Central Square, and I imagine that's some of the oldest sewer, sewer pipes in town. We know the general condition of those.
That was done at the sewer project.
Right.
It was either relined, it was looked at, it was either relined or it was fine with the way it was.
So it's in good shape? So we can, it doesn't, so I would hate to see us resurface the roads or something and three, three years later realize we need to dig up the sewers.
That was, that was one of the drivers of this project?
Yeah.
To do that.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're, we're looking really good for sewer stuff in the, in the town.
Well, beyond the $30 million bill.
Well, I mean, of course, it, so, you know, at the end of the day, when you walk away and everybody has the, the coffee and tea for the party that they completed the project and congratulate the team, it's going to be great stuff after spending 20 million in a couple of years.
Right, right.
Unfortunately, 20 million, 20 to 30 million dollars, not our idea, it's EPA's idea, so.
Right.
Right. We're driven by them.
Right.
And, you know, we have this limitation set for water consumption. Is there anything else that we have on the black water side or the, you know, do you have something else on the dirty water, whatever you want to call it, but the other?
Water side of it?
So the water side is reduction.
Yeah.
Is there something at, at the, what we're doing with composting or the treatment of the sewer side of it? Is there something similar that, there's going to be some constrictions coming down?
Well, with maybe the new permit, we might be able to extend our disposal by another 10%.
Right.
Extend our sewer areas.
Okay.
They weren't looking at that favorably anyways, at this last time.
Right. So that was, I, I mentioned to you, we had negotiations with the EPA. And, and that was, that was a point that Mr. Dutton made very strongly to the EPA. We need more flow. Bridgewater is expanding. Why are you holding us to this limit? And unfortunately, we weren't successful in this round. The permits come due every five years. But we did get some, some agreement that in the next round of the permit, we'll be talking about a, possibly a 10% increase in capacity. So that's a very critical point because in this $30 million upgrade, we're going to want to build in that capacity to start with. So when the permit comes due, the capacity will always be there.
Mr. Colomodos?
Do we know what percentage of infiltration? Infiltrate, if the pipes are leaky, then stormwater will infiltrate and the system gets sent to be processed when it doesn't need to.
Correct.
Do we know what percentage infiltration we have in the system overall?
We have not done a detailed study of that, but the purpose of this, this, one of the big projects was to basically reduce that.
Right.
And there were two approaches. One approach would be to study the heck out of it and put in meters and do all kind of analysis, spend a whole bunch of money doing a report, or to basically go in and say, we're going to inspect the lines, if they're in bad shape, we're going to rehab them and move on. And that's what we decided to do.
Get what you get, right.
You get what you get, right.
Yeah, yeah.
So there may be some follow-up work where we actually do some metering to actually figure out how much II we have. But that was.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Well, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
That was excellent, very informative. Ah, so Michael Dutton's not here. We can, if there's no town manager, no town manager report? There we go, moving on. Discussions, seeing none. Committee reports. Mrs. Loesch?
No action items, but will the Strategic Planning Committee and the Rules and Procedure Committee will be meeting on Monday, the first? So if anyone has any inputs for those committees, they can, more than welcome to come down, 6:30 and 7:30 respectively. They probably got those backwards, but it'll be posted accordingly.
It'll be posted.
Yeah.
Any other meetings for committees' reports? No? Okay.
The Rules and Procedure Committee is meeting and the Strategic Planning Committee is meeting on October 1st at 6:30 and at 7:30.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
I, I have, I have two hearing aids. I'm an old guy, so.
No worries.
Any others? Okay. Now we move on to legislation for action.
Mr. President, can we make a motion to postpone till our next meeting, item A, B, and D? Because I imagine that they weren't voted on by the Finance Committee.
I'll second that.
You are correct, and we have a motion to move A, B, and D postponed to 10/9. Made and seconded, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Is there a discussion on that?
There wasn't.
I had, I'm sorry, I had one item, point of discussion on that. What, I guess I'd like to get some clarity as to the position of the Finance Committee. Apparently, I've learned that both the town manager and the town clerk have appointed their three people. What, what is the short, do we know where the shortcoming is? Ms. Alberg, do we know?
Still not reaching a quorum.
My understanding is that there's one vacancy. I think it's a town manager vacancy. So, just one.
I'm wondering who, who we need to lean on to make their appointment.
The town manager will be leaned on, apparently.
I, I think it's a little deeper than that. I, I think it's a, a scheduling issue, trying to get five of the nine together at, at a particular point in time.
We manage.
We only have three.
Nine of us.
Nine of us, sure.
Hey, we'll put them on TV. I suggest that moving forward.
I'm not suggesting it's an excuse, I'm just suggesting that's why we can't vote on these things tonight that are really important.
Exactly right. Okay, so that brings us to order FY19-0.
Did we vote on that?
Yeah, and then we had discussion after.
We did, we had a discussion after.
Okay.
So this, order OFY19-019, rescind and revote order FY18046, ratification of American power lease agreement. Message was taken as a first reading on 9/11 and was not referred to any committee. 14 days has elapsed, per section Roman numeral XVII of the Council Rules and Procedures, therefore may be finally considered this evening.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made and approved, discussion?
None for me.
I'll, I'll just point out.
Yes, Mr. Wood?
If I may, the reason it was rescind and revote, as the note said, just to point this out, is with the length of the, of the lease, that's, that's all.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion? Those in favor?
No.
Aye.
The roll call vote.
Roll call vote. There, it says right there in the highlight.
Mr. Souza?
Aye.
Mr. Colomodos?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Thank you for that. There is no old business today, but we have some new business.
I'd make a motion to bundle items A, B, and C all to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee for.
I just want to read the title so that folks watching at home know.
Motion's made and seconded for, to refer the following. Transfer order for the General Fund Free Cash Allocation to Trust Funds, which is FY19-023. Next, FY19024, transfer order Capital Plan 2019-1, Town Clerk Voting Booths, followed by FY19-025, transfer order Water Reserve Transfer for Carbonics Treatment Plant Roof and Repaires. We will now have vote for, referred.
Is there any further discussion on that?
Is there any further discussion on that? Tim might have something, Mr. Fitzgibbons? Mr. Colomodos?
What jumped out at me is how we're, this recommendation would allocate only $100,000 to the OPEB Stabilization Fund, so I would just urge the committee to look at that. I know that, that fund is dramatically underfunded.
Other comments? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those against? Citizens' comments? Seeing none. We will move to council comments. Mr. Souza?
Please.
Any comments?
Comment? I'll skip it tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Colomodos?
Nope.
Mr. Wood?
Sure. This Saturday coming up is the last Saturday of September, and as we all know, the last Saturday in September is the Autumn Fest, right? Do I have the right weekend?
You do.
So when I'm in town, I try to go and attend lots of vendors, lots of booths, lots of faces of business and volunteer organizations. It's, it's one of those things that we don't often hear about the college contributing to the town, but they, as far as I'm aware, they donate the space, the time, the cleanup, and a little bit of staffing to, to help that along. And our own businesses from Central, Central Business District and others are there. So hopefully, everybody can step out and spend a few minutes there. Thanks.
Mr. Gallagher?
Well, we had some great presentations tonight. I think there were some very informative presentations by our finance team and the water and sewer department. That was, I have never seen a presentation from our water and sewer department, and it was quite, quite informative. Very, very well done. But before you go to Autumn Fest Saturday afternoon or Saturday morning, you can come to the Bridgewater Police 5K. I will be running in it. I'm sure maybe a few of you might be running in it as well, so I hope to finish that race and then get over to Autumn Fest. So it's a, it's a busy day in town on Saturday. Thank you.
Mr. Chase is not here, Mr. George.
Just my apologies for being late, being, you know, being reliant on public transportation every so often, comes with its pluses and minuses. And other than that, I'll, I'll echo Counselor Woods mentioning Autumn Fest, looking forward to it. From what I can tell, the weather's going to be great, so hopefully, everyone comes